When saints to saints in days of old, their sorrow, sins, and sufferings told; Jesus the friend of sinners dear, his saints to bless was present there, as members of his mystic frame, together met to bless his name. While humbly at his throne we bow, has God with us, he is present now. Oh blessed devotion thus to meet, and spread our woes at his dear feet! Call him our own in ties of blood, and oh sweet fellowship with God! His former visits we recount, on Massars and on Hermann's Mount; yet still our souls desire anew his sweetest love, this face to view. Jesus our peace, our shield and sun; when thou shalt draw, our feet shall run; but if thou visit, thou return, we will pray and wish thy sweet return.
Let's bow and attempt to go before the Lord in the word of true prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank thee that thou hast given us grace and strength to once again meet together. We pray that thou would enable us to be edified, that we might be strengthened, that we might learn of thee, that we might see the beauties of our Redeemer, that we might feel his presence in our midst. Lord, we know that thou hast promised where two or three are gathered together in thy name, Lord, in thy midst. We pray that thou would be in our midst this morning. We thank thee that we do not despise the day of small things, but realize that thou hast set all things in order for us as thou would have it be. We pray that thou would make us ever reconcile to thy holy and blessed will and let us know that thou will always do right. Bless thy word. Bless this congregation. It's in the name of the Lord Jesus we ask. Amen. If you have your Bibles, I'm gonna read a couple of verses from Joel, the prophet Joel, chapter 3, beginning with verse 16. "But the Lord shall shout aloud from out of Zion, and shall utter his voice from out of Jerusalem; and the heaven and the earth shall be shaken. But the Lord shall spare his people and shall strengthen the sons of Israel." The Lord shall shout aloud. From where? Out of Zion. Notice, he does not shout aloud from Sinai when he comes to his people. See, that's what this is getting at right here. This is showing us here that the shout of the Lord comes not from the law, from Mount Sinai, but rather it comes from Zion and it comes to the hearing of his children, not to anyone else. You know, I'm reminded of a text in, I believe it's Numbers, when I was reading that this morning. This come to mind when old Balam was out there and Balak had done, told him that he needed to, needed him to curse Israel. And Balam said, "Well, I can't do anything but talk about what, but tell you what the Lord tells me about it." And he said that about Israel, he said, "The shout of the king is with him." The shout of a king is with him. You see, the Lord is the king over his people. And it's he who does this speaking, shouting. And what else does he say? "And from out of Jerusalem shall he utter his voice." Now let me ask you a question. Is this talking about the earthly Jerusalem? Think about what the apostle Paul wrote in the book of Galatians when he talked about Hagar and Sarah and their children, which things he said was an allegory. Now I know there's a lot of Bible so-called teachers out there that claim you can't allegorize the Scripture, you shouldn't allegorize it, you shouldn't make this that it means exactly what it says literally, and that's the only way you should take it. But I'm gonna tell you that there was a literal Hagar and there was a literal Sarah and they each literally had a child. But those things stood for spiritual realities far beyond what the natural children could have thought of or what the natural mothers and fathers could have thought of. What'd you have? You had Sarah being the wife. You had Hagar being her servant, a bond woman. Now, when she gave that bond woman to Abraham and he conceived a boy or she conceived a boy or son, Ishmael, did that make Ishmael a free-born child? Absolutely not. Ishmael was as much in bondage as his mother was. Just because he had Abraham for his father didn't make him free. You see that? That's important to understand Paul's reasoning that because he was the child of a slave, he himself was a slave. He would have to be freed from that bondage by a separate action other than his natural birth, if he was gonna be. So Paul talks about this allegory in Galatians about Sarah and Hagar. And they're a pretty interesting way that he takes it here. Let me turn over here 'cause I don't wanna, I don't wanna misquote anything if I can help it. And this, haven't got all the pages signed out in this. I just had this book for about a month, if that long. All right. All right, here's what it says. It has been written, Abraham had two sons, one from the maidservant and one from out of the free woman. The one indeed out of the maidservant has been born according to the flesh and the one from out of the free woman was through the promise, which things are an allegory. But these are two covenants. All right. The one indeed from Mount Sinai, born in slavery, which is Hagar. For Hagar is Mount Sinai in Arabia, it's what I wanna get to, corresponding with the present Jerusalem. And she is enslaved with her children. So Jerusalem, which was then, Jerusalem which was of nature, Jerusalem which was the capital of Israel at the time, was a symbol of the slavery that God's children and the world are in by nature, by nature. That's why when he says the voice of the Lord shall be uttered out of Jerusalem, he's not talking about that Jerusalem. He's not putting his voice out of the Jerusalem which is now. He does not speak from out of that. When he speaks from out of that, it's not as our text says, "to spare his people," is it? Think of this. If the word of the Lord comes to you through the law, what's he gonna do? Is he gonna tell you what a good boy or girl you were? Is he gonna say, "Well, you've obeyed me and you've done wonderful things?" No, it's gonna be just the opposite. It's gonna condemn you. It's gonna be a rod and it's gonna smack you over the head. It's gonna hit you across the back and it says, "You haven't done near what you're supposed to do even though you think you've been right." Because for me to be satisfied, this is the law now, and this is God speaking through the law to every one of his children. He says, "For me to be satisfied with your legal obedience, it has got to be absolutely perfect. It has got to be absolutely perpetual. You can't miss a lick. And if you miss a lick, you're guilty of all of it. Not just the commandment that you broke here. It all stands and falls together. The law is a unit. Never forget that the law of God is a unit. It is one thing. That's why you see in the Old Testament so much, it doesn't say, "I love thy first, second, and fifth commandments," it says, "I love the law." It says, "I meditate on the law, day and night." All of these things signifying the word of God to his children, which comes in two ways, through the law condemnation, through the law reproof, through the law showing you how much you fail. It doesn't spare any. What can the legal system of this country can spare you? You can go before a judge or a jury and you can be guilty and they can say, "We're not gonna punish you. You've been, you've had enough. You've done this, that, or the other and that's it. You're, you're, you're absolved right now." God does not do that. God does not do that. He is not as man is. His justice must be completely satisfied in the law. Not one thing could be left undone. And if it is, you're guilty, period. No reprieve. No reprieve. I'm reminded of him where it says, "Indignant justice stood in view; to Sinai's fiery mount I flew; but justice cried with flaming face. This mountain is no hiding place because it does nothing but condemn you. It shows you your bondage and it shows you that you can't release yourself from that bondage. No more than a slave at that time could release themselves from their bondage." Oh, you say, "Well, they could run away." But it doesn't change the fact that they are still a slave. It doesn't change the fact that if they were to go back to the country they came from, they'd still be a slave by God, wouldn't they? So there you go. That's Hagar. That's Jerusalem which is now. But he says, "But the heavenly Jerusalem, that above Jerusalem, is free." Now that's the voice that he's, that's the Jerusalem he's speaking from here, not from the fiery Jerusalem, not from the old Jerusalem, but he's speaking from new Jerusalem. And how do I know this? Because the Lord shall spare his people. Oh, I thought you said justice had to be satisfied. It does. So you got a choice, brethren. You got a choice. You can satisfy it. No, you can't. You could try, but you ain't gonna do it. But Jesus has satisfied it. And that not for himself. See, that's the beautiful part of the salvation that comes from God. As Jesus wrought a complete, full, and free salvation by fulfilling every jot and tittle of the law. He said, one time, he said, "That law, not one jot or tittle will pass till all be fulfilled." Now you got people out there today that are waiting for that law to be fulfilled. God's children, those that have been taught of the Father, that have been drawn to him, know that he is the fulfillment of the law for all things, that his life was a life of perfect perpetual obedience under the law, that not one thing that the law could bring to you or to me, not one thing that it could bring to you or to me, he didn't experience. How do I know that? Because it tells me in the book of Hebrews that he was tempted in all points like as we are, yet without sin. Yet without sin. See there? You and I get tempted. Many times Paul said, or John, I can't remember now, said, "We are enticed and drawn away." We have our loves and we go after them if we're not restrained by the Spirit of God because this old nature is still here, unfortunately for us, but not so with Jesus. He obeyed the law, fulfilled every jot and tittle of it, and then, even though perfect, was condemned under that law. Well, how could he be? If he completely fulfilled the law? If there was never a time when he wasn't in complete obedience to it, how could he? I'll tell you how he could. God made him, who knew no sin, to be sin for us. How did he do that? By laying the sins of every one of the children on him to where that Jesus, as prophesied by Jeremiah in the book of the Lamentations, could say, "The yoke of my transgressions is bound around my neck." He didn't have any, not of his own, but he took on him the sins of his people. Think about this with me for just a moment. Adam and Eve were out there in the garden. The serpent comes. Eve's deceived and takes of the fruit of the tree of the knowledge of good and evil. Don't you think that if he'd have been a smart man, Adam would have said, "Go on with you. God can make me a new woman. I'm not taking that fruit God told me not to." He loved his wife. He said, "She's boning my bone and fleshing my flesh." He's loving himself in her. He sees in her the completion, as it were, of himself. And so though he knows it's wrong, he takes that fruit and eats it, that they might be together. Jesus has a bride. Jesus has a people, a body given to him before the foundation of the world and his great love that he had for his spouse. He would take their transgression just the same as Adam took the transgression of Eve. Adam couldn't put it away, but he took it. Took it from her hand. Jesus, as it were, took the transgressions of his people, every one of them. I don't care what it is. If you're a child of the Most High, if you were given to him before the foundation of the world, if he set his love upon you, then your sins, as awful as they might be and as scarlet as you might feel them to be, as if they were the shedding of blood to cover you, he took every one of them and he died for it. And his voice comes out of Jerusalem. It's his voice that's speaking out of Mount Sinai because it's there that the children of God have now come. They have seen the futility of Mount Sinai. They have seen the futility of their own works. They have seen everything against them. And they know that they must rely on their Savior solely and totally. And they can put no confidence in the flesh. And that's what it says. We have no confidence in the flesh. Man, I don't know about y'all, but sometimes I wanna have confidence in my flesh. But I realize, when blessed and only when blessed by the Spirit of God, I'll guarantee you that, I realize how foolish that sentiment is. Paul says, "I know that in me that is in my flesh." It dwells a little something good that needs to be fanned up, just a spark. No, he didn't say that. He said, "I know that in me that is in my flesh dwelleth no good thing." What happens when the shout comes out of Zion? What happens when the voice is uttered from out of Jerusalem? "The heaven and the earth shall be shaken." I'm reminded there of what's recorded in the book of Hebrews talking about the shaking of the things that are made that the things which were not might stand. Those eternal things. Think about this. The shaking of the creation. All those things around us. Dead things. The things that we have are made from the things that were created, aren't they? Then you have all sorts of things. The shaking of the things that are made that the things which are eternal might remain. What was eternal? God. God. And his children. And his children. You know, there's been a controversy among Baptists in time past about eternal children. I believe it. I believe God's children were eternal. Oh, they weren't, they didn't look like this. If I'm one of them, I didn't look like this 'cause I was in Christ. I was part of the seed. I was part of the bride. I was part of the body. Didn't have a separate existence. But I was there in eternity. "The heaven and the earth shall be shaken; but the Lord shall spare his people." He'll spare them. That shaken also implies judgment, doesn't it? Meted out, pressed down, and shaken, something to that effect. Remember. The Lord is gracious unto his children, but he is also the just and holy judge. And I'm gonna tell you something. Acquittal is as much a judgment as condemnation. "He hath not beheld iniquity in Jacob nor sin in Israel." Again, the word of the Lord that came through Balam. "The shout of the king is with him because his king is of purer eyes than to behold iniquity." His king is in his midst. The king is with them because Jesus has been exalted now as the king and seated at the right hand of God on the throne of his father David where he waits till all his enemies be made his footstool. What's the last enemy to be destroyed? The Lord will spare his people. Oh yeah, the body will die. Body will die. Unless the Lord comes again, the body will die. But the Spirit will return to God that gave it. And there's coming a time when that which has been planted will come forth. What do I mean? I mean that just like Jesus rose from the dead, all of his children will as well. And they will And they will rise to a resurrection. And a heaven. And a glory of the new Jerusalem that we have had a foretaste of here, but that we cannot comprehend with these natural, with this natural mind. We couldn't see it with these natural eyes, because flesh and blood can't inherit that kingdom. So what's he sparing us too? He's sparing us to glory. And what else does it say? And he shall strengthen the sons of Israel. Now, when you look at that. You remember. The words of the apostle Paul, writing to the Romans. They are not all Israel which are of Israel. Just because they're Abraham's seed doesn't mean they're cold. Cause it's only in Isaac, not in Ishmael, not in Hager's bond child. But only in Isaac, because he was a child of promise. He was a child of grace. He was the heir promised by almighty God to Abraham and Sarah. And even though it seemed like all was against them. He strengthened them both. What was it? Abraham was a hundred and she was ninety? And he strengthened them in it. And so will he strengthen the sons of Israel for the exact purpose that he has for them. For the exact thing that he's going to bring them through, for the exact thing he's going to strengthen them. And not in the flesh, but in the spirit and by himself, not. As if they had to go out and exercise their faith, and not as though they had to go out and exercise their bodies, but rather. He will give them what is necessary. He will strengthen. The sons. Of Israel. Oh, children. Children of the heavenly king. Children of Israel today. Is the spiritual seed of Abraham. Abraham's called the father of the faithful, and therefore his spiritual seed. Is the one that's going to get strengthened. Paul said strengthened with all power and might in the inward man. Though the outward man's perishing, this inward man's renewed day by day. Oh, and the older we get, the more we feel the perishing, don't we? Oh, and then sometimes we want to rebel against it. We think we can do better. We think we can keep it a little longer. We think it could. Be built up just a tad. No, no. It's going to do exactly what the Lord said. You know. Right in the first chapter of Amos, the next book. Amos talked about almost the same thing. Amos said in verse two of chapter one. The Lord uttered a sound from out of Zion. And from out of Jerusalem, he gave his voice. And what does he say happened? And the pastures of the shepherds mourned and the top of Carmel was dried up. Amos was a herdsman, wasn't he, out of Tikoa? He knew about being a shepherd. And he deals with shepherds in that book too, if I remember right. Ezekiel talks about, Jeremiah talks about. That there's the true shepherds. And there's the false shepherds. The pastures of the shepherds mourned. See there? When the Lord's voice came out of Jerusalem. When the utterance came from out of Zion. The pastures of the shepherds mourned. Notice the shepherds didn't mourn. But their pastors did. Because the Lord will spare his people from the shaking. The Lord shall spare his people from. The judgment. And he will. Strengthen the sons of Israel. Listen to the next verse, three seventeen. And ye shall know. That I am the Lord, your God. You shall know, I'm the Lord, your God. Not these things that the world calls gods. You'll know I'm it. Why? Because you've heard my voice. See, that's important. That the Israel of God will hear his voice. You know, the Armenian world makes big deals. Out of, uh. Out of that text over in Romans. Where it says, "Faith cometh by hearing and hearing by the word of God," as the King James Version says. Let's read that more literally. Faith comes through hearing. And hearing comes through the speech of God. Through the speaking of God. Well, what does that mean? It means you're deaf. By nature. You know why you're deaf? Cause the dead can't hear. You're spiritually dead by nature, and it takes the voice of the son of God to quicken you. The hour is coming, and now is, Jesus said. And now is. When the dead shall hear the voice of the son of God, and they that hear shall live. And he didn't leave that to me, and he didn't leave that to anybody else to speak the word to, rather, brethren, he gave them. His own word, his own speech from his own mouth. And here it tells, "You shall know that I am. The Lord, your God, encamping in Zion." In other words, that God is with his children in Zion, not on Sinai, but on Mount Sinai. And we could go to, what is it? The, uh. Uh, the book of Hebrews, it's, I believe in the twelfth chapter. Where it says, "You're not come to the mount that might be touched, to burn with fire and smoke and voices." But you've come to Mount Zion. Not that you're going to come there, but you are coming there already. And that's where God is. You've come to Jesus, the mediator of the new covenant, not just an innumerable company of angels. Not just the general assembly, not just the church of the firstborn ones, but rather, you've come to God because he encamps. In Zion with his children. Do you feel him there all the time? Oh, I wish we could. I wish we could. You know, I intellectually know. That God is everywhere present, nowhere absent. I intellectually know that God is with his children in a special way. But to feel it in my heart, to feel it in my soul, to experience that God. The God that made heaven and earth condescends to not just be everywhere, but to be especially with his people. Oh, brethren, that. Is what the child of God desires, I believe, more than anything else. God is encamping in Zion. And even though we don't feel it, he's still there. He's with his people. My holy mountain. And Jerusalem will be holy. And Jerusalem will be holy. Well, we know that's not talking about earthly Jerusalem, don't we? Earthly Jerusalem will never be holy, and it never was holy, but heavenly Jerusalem is nothing but holy, because it comes down from heaven. From God. As a bride adoring for her husband. It's that holy city. That the earthly Jerusalem prefigured. In the earthly Jerusalem, there was a temple. Where God met with his people. Where they offered sacrifice, where they fulfilled the duties that were given them under the law. But in the heavenly Jerusalem, there is no temple. Because the sacrifice has already been made, and they're finished forever, and there's no more sacrifice for sin to be offered. Because Jesus made the one sacrifice. And there it is. And what did it do to his people? It made them holy. And without blame. That they might stand before God in that love that he had for them before the foundation of the world. And never left them, and brought them down through time, through Mount Sinai. Through the desert places. Through the wilderness. To the pastures. To the streams. The Lord is my shepherd. I shall not want. Leadeth me beside still waters. Make me lie down in green pastures. Oh, my brethren, in the good pastures of plenty. Not what this world offers. You shall know. Because you've heard my voice. You shall know, because you have experienced my love. You will know, because, that's the hymn we sang quoting the scripture in John. You will know, because I have drawn you. And I have led you. Where did Deuteronomy tell us that the Lord found Jacob? In a waste hallowing wilderness, in a desert land? And there's millions out there today wishes that thing would stay, and he took him out of it. But no, he let him about in it. He let him about in it. And even though he was in the desert, even though he was in a waste hallowing wilderness, the Lord instructed him. Kept him, as the apple of the side. And no harm would befall him. Because his God was with him. And all that he would experience would be for God's glory. And all that he would experience would be for his own good. Strengthened. In knowledge, in the inward man. It's a blessing. That can only come from on high. To know that we're encamped. Now, what does that imply? Encamping in Mount Zion. That word has an implication there that we need to consider. If you're encamped. You're not in a permanent location. It's something you can strike your camp and move elsewhere. It's not. Enhoused, you're encamped. It's not you have an abode, you have a camp. The children of Israel, as they left Egypt, encamped in the wilderness. And they encamped. As they went through, and after they crossed Jordan and went into the promised land, they encamped until they fought the battles the Lord had for them to fight. And were enabled to take over. That land. They were in camp, they were. And think about. Abraham again. Man, we got to get into Abraham everything, don't we? You know, we do, because he's the father of the faithful, he said. We're told that. Says he saw a city. He considered himself a stranger and a pilgrim on this earth, even though he was taken to a land that the Lord would give him for an inheritance. He still considered himself a stranger and a pilgrim on this earth. And if we, as the hymn writer said, might by faith. Cross over, uh. If we might by faith see that promised land. It means that we're confessing ourselves, just like Abraham was, a stranger, a pilgrim. A wanderer on this earth. Because this world is not our home. He saw the city that had foundations. He knew that the foundations of the cities, I don't care if it's New York City, I don't care if it's Los Angeles, Seattle, Hong Kong, Tokyo, Paris, London, you name it. Every one of them can be shaken and fall. Every one of them. You might say, well, there ain't no fault under. New York City. Doesn't matter. If the Lord wants it to fall, great will be the fall thereof. You mean the Lord would do such a thing? Yes, I do mean that. He would do such a thing. Well. We're encamping in Zion. And the blessed thing is that God is encamping with us. And just as he led the children of Israel by the cloud and by the pillar of fire. He's leading us. Not with those visible signs. Like he did them. They needed it. They needed it. They needed that law written in stone. But it was. It's not anymore. For God's children, neither the cloud nor the pillar earth for us anymore. Rather. Now faith guides us. I'd say, I don't have any. If you're God's child, you do, even if, when you don't perceive it. It's there. Even if you don't perceive it. Because it's by faith we see these things. It's by faith we see the new Jerusalem. It's by faith that we hear his voice. It's by faith. That we believe. That we are encamped in this Zion. With our God and that. For as long as he intends for us to be in his holy mountain. All right. You shall know that I am the Lord, your God, encamping in Zion, my holy mountain. And Jerusalem will be holy. And foreigners shall not go through her any longer. That's right. No more foreigners in Jerusalem. No more strangers. No more Gentiles. Only spiritual Israel shall be there. And it will be in that day. The mountains will trickle down sweetness. And the hills shall flow milk. And all the releases of Judah shall flow waters. Listen now. And a spring. Shall come forth from out of the house of the Lord. And shall water the rushing stream. All right. I'm going to give you two things on this. And Lord willing, we're going to close. The Lord says, when he spoke in the Spirit, says, "Out of his belly shall flow rivers of living water." Then again, it says. When he looked at the new Jerusalem, when John did. He said, "From that throne springs a river of water of life. Clear as crystal. Down it comes, the streams thereof make glad the city of our God." Oh, brethren, think of that. The water shall be, shall the water, the rushing, uh, excuse me, from out of the house of the Lord, the spring shall come forth. And shall water the rushing stream. Who's on that throne? Who's on that throne? Is it not Jesus? Who from out of his driven side flowed blood and water? The living water of his Spirit, the blood that cleans from all sin. They're applied from the same source to the same people. They come from the same source. It's the Spirit of Jesus, the Spirit that he gives, the Spirit that he sends to all those to whom his precious blood has been applied, and none other, and none other. And we are refreshed by that water. We are refreshed by that river. We long to be in it. We long to drink from it. I'm reminded of Jesus on one occasion there, recorded in the Gospel of John, where he must go through Samaria. He meets that woman at the well. He said, "Give me a drink. Do you, a Jew, speak to a Samaritan woman?" Said, "If you knew who spoke to you, you'd ask him, and he'd give you living water." "You don't have anything to draw with, and this is deep. Where are you going to get the water? Don't you worry about it. I'll give it to you. I can give it to you, and you'll never thirst again." Speaking of the Spirit, didn't he? "They that worship the Father must worship him in spirit and in truth, and it's not in Mount Gerizim, and it's not on Mount Sinai, and it's not on any place but the, in any place but the heavenly Jerusalem, which is on the Mount Zion of God, his holy mountain, where his holy people shall walk. Holy not because they are good lawkeepers, but holy because they've been made righteous, and they have been made holy, and they have had the righteousness of Christ given to them, just as he took on the sins of every one of his people. So every one of them foretake of his righteousness and are holy and without blame before him." Everybody wants to try to make themselves holy in this life. Jesus has made his children holy and has given them all these things that they could not provide for him, for themselves. Not because they deserved it, but because of who they are. The sons, the children of Israel. Not natural Israel, but spiritual. Not the natural children of Abraham, but the spiritual children of Abraham, the father of the faithful. "Oh, that lets me out, I'm not faithful." Didn't have to be. Jesus was faithful for you. Well, or the hymn writer say, "If a saint then least of all." Maybe so. And that's a good place to be. Rather to be the least of saints than anything else. I hope that a few of these thoughts at least would have been blessed to your edification. We do have a little business to attend to after the close, after we close. Let's bow in dismission. "Lord bless us now as we go forth from this place. Bless us to see that our standing in thee is, is in thee, and not based on anything we can do. Let us see thy heavenly Jerusalem, situated on thy holy mountain. Let us know that thou hast placed us there as citizens, and that we have it by that new and heavenly birth out of this flesh. Now go with us as we depart from this place. Keep us safe. Keep us in thy love and grant that our fellowship might be complete, both in each other and in thee, for Christ's sake, in whose name we ask. Amen."